We are ready to begin. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. I'd like to call a special board. I'd like to call to order the special board.
Are you ready, Amy?
Yeah, hold on a minute.
Commissioners meeting Friday, May 21st, 2021 at 8:30 a.m. Myra, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Winmiller? Commissioner Winmiller?
Present.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Gladney?
Present.
Commissioner Beach?
Here.
Commissioner Pastello? Commissioner Cox?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Galladay? We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for the board to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal confidential or privileged matters as permitted under by state development board policy, Chapter 10, Section 10.080 D1 Legal?
Simmons, so moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown? Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We'll go into executive session now. The board has reconvened to the open meeting. Do I have a motion to authorize the settlement authority for liability claim number 2021-01, Resolution Number 1136 as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? We have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you, Myra. If there's no further business, I would request a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Do we need a roll call vote?
No, we do not.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. We'll move on to our regularly scheduled committee meetings now.
We're ready to proceed. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I will call the meeting to order for the May 21st, 2021 Audit Finance and Administration Committee meeting. Can we start with a roll call vote, please? Or a roll call, please?
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Here.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Present.
Commissioner Simmons?
Present.
Commissioner Pastello? Commissioner Cox?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Galladay? Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Beach?
Here.
Commissioner Gladney?
Present.
Do we have any public comments submitted for this meeting?
No, we did not have any comments submitted for the AFA meeting.
The first agenda item is the approval of the minutes from the March 19th, 2021 AFA Committee Open Meeting. The meetings have been provided to all the members for review. Does anybody have any questions or comments before I ask for a motion to approve? Hearing none, can we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? I think that we have a dog that opposed, but... The next agenda item, we have a sole source contracts for hardware or software maintenance, Agenda Item Number Five. And Tom Curran and Kerry Kincaid are going to have comments on this.
Good morning, Chairman Zimmerman and Commissioners. This morning, I'm presenting for the committee's acceptance and submission for the full board for approval, a request for sole source contracts for hardware and software maintenance as budgeted for fiscal year '22. The fiscal year 2022 budget allocates approximately $3.2 million for costs associated with hardware and software maintenance contracts. The majority of these contracts cost less than $100,000. However, seven exceed that amount and require Board of Commissioners approval. Those contracts are listed in the briefing paper that you have, and they include support for ByState's business functions such as operator dispatch, employee timekeeping, financial and ERP, operations, and customer service systems. This consolidated annual request for approval of required hardware and software maintenance contracts has been our standard since 2013. Staff analyzes and verifies the need and appropriate level of support for each of these contracts. Negotiations will be conducted to ensure that costs are reasonable. These expenses are budgeted as part of ByState's operating budget, and they are funded through local sales tax appropriations. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments for Tom? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Five.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Agenda Item Number Five passes. Agenda Item Number Six, that is an amendment to board policy, Section 30.070 hedging. And this is to Tammy Fulbright for comments and information on this one.
Good morning. This item is to request an amendment to the fuel hedge policy. These changes include better defining the policy in the fuel hedge program by specifying the members of the fuel hedge committee, frequency of fuel hedge committee meetings, and fuel hedge reporting requirements, oversight of the consultants' actions, and compliance with the fuel hedge policy, as well as maximum hedge and maturity for fuel hedge contracts. So we're requesting to move this item to the board for approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm not hearing any questions. I guess I just have one comment. I know we had some issues this in the past, and I've reviewed it. I think some of these changes make a lot of sense. I'm just wondering, with the increase in fuel prices, maybe this is more of an operations question, is this something, you know, I haven't heard much about hedging in the last few years, but is this something we think could be, you know, more of a way to increase savings or performance? Or is this just kind of, we hedge, and it's helpful no matter if the price of fuel is increasing, decreasing? I guess just general thoughts on that, because I really haven't seen much about this in the last few years.
Yeah, that's correct. So we're basically using the fuel hedge to just not see the spikes in fuel expense for the budget, and so that's mainly what we're using the hedging for.
Okay. All right. Well, I didn't hear any questions about the proposed changes, so I will, I will request a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Six. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Seven is our fiscal year 2022 Annual Audit Work Plan, and we'll have Crystal provide comments on this one. Good morning, Crystal.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. So for the fiscal year 2022 Annual Audit Work Plan, we want to continue to concentrate on areas of greater exposure using a cycled approach to assure some adequate coverage. Some of the areas that we've identified are finance, compliance, and management of employee programs, with a high emphasis on human resources this year, and continuing with our revenue reviews. The proposed schedule of audits for each quarter is presented in Exhibit A, which is on page 29 of your committee packet. And I would recommend that these items that are listed on this audit plan for fiscal year '22 be approved.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments about this generally, or about, I guess, the four-quarter breakdowns for the specific audits that Crystal plans to do on page 29? I'll give you a second to look at it if you'd like to refresh yourselves.
Commissioner Zimmerman, if I can just comment briefly?
Sure, please.
Yeah, you'll note that there is a really good emphasis on audit targets that are helpful from a managerial standpoint. We talked actually on some of these managerial points just a few minutes ago about having the employees follow the procedures. So these are really helpful. Crystal has been instrumental in figuring out an audit tact that helps us manage the company. I just want to, I just want to note that synergy that we're starting to develop, and thank Crystal for her professionalism. Thank you.
Good, good to hear. I will entertain a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seven.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Eight are our Draft Internal Audit Policies and Procedures Manual, Revision Three, and again, Crystal will provide comments on this issue.
Thank you, Commissioners Zimmerman. So this is just to present to the committee for approval, review of approval, for an update that is pretty long overdue. The manual was effective in March 2nd of 2012, and the last revision approval date was June 26th of 2015. Some of the updates that were made in this revision were aligning professional standards to the most current version of the Institute of Internal Auditors International Professional Practices Framework, adjusting the quality assurance review from three years to five years, and adjusting work paper guidance to electronic files instead of paper files. Also, it is recommended that we are removing the U.S. government auditing standards requirement, and then we also added in the internal safety audit process, and of course, we made basic editorial changes.
And Crystal, Crystal approached me with these suggestions before, just to kind of discuss it with me, and several of these were recommended by outside, outside auditors and outside consultants, right?
Correct. In March of 2018, CROW actually conducted a quality audit review of our internal audit department. One of the compliance observations that was noted was that we do need to specify which audit standards we're going to follow, and such as the government auditing standards, which should be removed from their reports to avoid confusion on the standards that we actually follow every day.
So can you explain that a little bit, Crystal? So we don't do GSA every, on all audits?
So GSA is very audit-specific, so it's kind of guidance on individual audits, whereas the international framework of professional practices driven by the IAA is actually for an all-encompassing audit department. So no, we do not. And since 2018, when it was recommended by CROW that we remove that, we have actually been following just the compliance for the IAA audit standards.
So this is just a cleanup of the actual manual, but we've already implemented the actual change?
Yes, Commissioner Winmiller.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will request a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Eight.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Agenda Item Number Eight passes. Agenda Item Number Nine is our fiscal year 2021 External Audit Client Service Plan from Ruben Brown. This is informational only, and it looks like Tammy Fulbright will handle this item.
Yes. This item is to provide information on the external audit plan for FY '21. Ruben Brown is in their third year of a five-year contract. So just to give you some highlights of the schedule and services they'll be providing, they'll start the testing on August 9th, and then audit field work will begin on September 17th. The financials will be presented to the audit committee in October and the board in November. And then for services, we added a couple of things this year, an audit of the arch, and then examination of the fuel hedge effectiveness. And then one other item I just want to mention is that due to some GASB changes and fiduciary activities, there'll be some presentation and disclosure changes to the salary-defined benefit pension plan and the OPEB medical trust plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions on this item also.
Any questions or comments for Tammy about Agenda Item Number Nine? Hearing none, I guess we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is Number 10. Again, this one is informational only also, and it is an IAD Audit Follow-Up Summary for the third quarter of fiscal year 2021, and then Crystal's going to handle this item.
Commissioner Zimmerman, if you don't mind, the next, all the way from 10, 11, 12, and 13, they're all informational. Would you like to kind of group those together for questions?
Yeah, I would. If it, if it kind of flows and it's similar, go ahead. Please, please proceed.
So mostly for the status updates, I just wanted to let everyone know that we do have a little bit fuller staff now. We have a senior administrative assistant, and we have a new senior internal auditor, who has jumped right in and started two audits, and has already completed one. So you're most definitely moving along very well in our, with all of our reviews. For the, for the safety and security oversight, we have completed quite a bit in the first quarter. And one of those things is that we've finalized our annual review and certification, and then we've also submitted five of those backlogged audits that we had on a recovery plan with the BSSO. And in conjunction with that, we have, we are actually in the RFP process, which is successfully in out there for solicitation with the outsourcing now.
Thank you for the, kind of the update on the recent audit activity. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Crystal about those comments, or about anything they noted when reviewing Agenda Items 10 through 13 and the information provided? Hearing none. Thanks, Crystal. Thank you for your succinct update. I guess we'll go ahead and move on to the next informational item, which is Number 14, the Quarterly Financial Statement, and we'll have Tammy Fulbright handle this item.
With this item, I'll hit some highlights here, too. For Executive Services, we're, we are at a loss of $800,000 primarily due to reduction in fees from the arch. Losses due to COVID, both at the arch and the riverfront. For the arch, we're at $2.6 million, and the riverfront, about $500,000. The airport is also at a loss of about $225,000, but this is primarily due to casualty and liability costs due to a fire from last year. When you look at transit, you'll see we're kind of at a break-even point, and that's basically because we are covering any shortfalls in revenue with CARES funding, and passenger revenue is still at about 55, down by about 55%. And then if you look at Freightway, you'll see that they're actually showing income of $90,000, but that's really just a timing thing. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Did we get CARES funding for the arch and the riverfront to be applied for that loss, or?
So we only received some CARES funding for the arch, or I'm sorry, it was actually for the airport, so none for the arch or the riverfront, only the airport. They received $69,000.
Is that available out there, or since it's on that arc, I guess it's not?
Right, it is not.
Yeah, well, I mean, the numbers aren't good, certainly. I guess, you know, I know, I know this is probably more for Talby. I know we've obviously discussed this at length in the past, but, you know, it's kind of hard for me to gauge this year-over-year, quarter-over-quarter at this point. But I guess with our current projections and our current plan, using the available CARES act or available, you know, financial aid we've been provided, I mean, what are the expectations for the trends starting to, you know, head, head in the right direction again on some of these numbers? Because it's just tough for me to know kind of when to start, you know, having more serious concerns about this versus, you know, the expectation is this is going to continue for the next few quarters, and then, you know, 2022 is going to look better. I guess I'm just trying to start ballparking or benchmarking where we're, where we're at with some of this data, because it's certainly, obviously, looking at year-over-year is, is poor.
Sure. So what I have asked staff to do is to take a look at the combination of the CARES funding, which of course is CARES, CRISA, and ARP. And take that, take those federal dollars and schedule them over a period of time so that we can, we can run this enterprise with the assumption of a 1.5% year-over-year increase, a normal increase, which we have accomplished over the past three fiscal years. And we make that in our budget presentation, and of course, Tammy is, is, is working with me and doing that with all of our funding partners right now. I've actually asked her to prepare an exhibit on year-to-date CARES, which would put some of that in context for you, Commissioner Zimmerman, so I'll be happy to forward that. Because you're right, the problem with looking at our one-year statements is it doesn't show where our trending is. The short answer is that we are working to push the CARES funding over a period of time so that we can recover our ridership. As you know, our ridership is down 50%, and we need to have some time to start to recover that ridership and try to do some things that are new and different so that we move our revenues up. But we're pushing the federal money over a period of time, so we have the time to do that. So I can show you, ask Tammy to prepare a parallel exhibit on how to do that over a period of time. I've asked them to scope out roughly 60 months or five years for that, and I'll be happy to share that. I think that's a good question, but we need to put it in, in context over time. So I'll be...
Yeah, that's, thank you. I think, I don't want to speak for nine other commissioners, but I think, you know, this doesn't provide me a whole lot of context, which, you know, we need to see the numbers, but I think something like that would, and I think it would helpful then to see, are we, you know, like you said, are we, are we on that path? We estimated, are we deviating from it, and we may need to make some more adjustments. So yeah, I'll, I'll wait to review that. Any other questions or comments about our quarterly financial statement? All right, hearing none. Agenda Item Number 15, the Treasures Report. Tammy, this is also for you.
Okay, I'll give some highlights on that area, too. So at March 31st, we had about $200 million in cash and investments, the average rate of return of six basis points, and our trustee-directed funds were at about $56 million with an average rate of return of 1.08%. And just to give you a quick update on the fuel hedge also, we have realized gains this year of 1.3 million, but we're looking at unrealized gains of 2.1 million. So we're starting to see where we're actually having realized gains, if you look at the February and March numbers. We budgeted $1.99 per gallon, but we're actually at $1.66 for March. And then one other item I wanted to mention is our S&amp;P credit rating was adjusted from negative to stable just recently this month, so that, that's another good sign. And I'm happy to answer any questions on this also.
Any questions for Tammy?
Tammy, that S...
Hearing.
I'm sorry. The S&amp;P rating, the negative rating, is that overall for the agency, or is it?
Yeah. Yes. So they, they looked at transit. So S&amp;P was probably the hardest credit rated agency on transit, and so as they're seeing more federal aid, that's making them feel more confident, so that's why they adjusted from negative to stable.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments for Tammy? Hearing none. I think we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 16, and that is a procurement report from Tom Curran. Good morning.
Good morning again. It's a very short report this month. It's a single page. The top chart shows the trend in total procurement spend in dollars for the past 10 years, including both competitive and non-competitive purchases, and the bottom chart depicts non-competitive spending as a percentage of our total procurement spending. So the total amount of non-competitive procurement spending for the third quarter of '21 was $7.75 million. That's 31.5% of the total purchase order commitment of $24.6 million, and the rolling 12-month average of non-competitive procurements is 18.7%. Third quarter non-competitive spending appears higher than average due to the lower amount of overall spending amount. The annual sole source renewals come at different times throughout the year, and these account for the peaks that you see in non-competitive spending in the second chart. So pretty much of a normal pattern, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Any questions for Tom? Hearing none. Thank you, Tom, for that report. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 17, which is the report from our president and CEO, Talby Roach.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just very briefly, so I want to note, you obviously see a lot of fresh faces associated with AFA. We have new talent here, and I'm hoping that we're moving promptly and precisely as far as what can be, yes, a dry and boring report, but these numbers are very, very important, and I want to commend the professional individuals that we have. I think you're hearing both an oversight and a integrity associated with our numbers and our reporting to you. I hope you're pleased by that. But I would also like to note that, as you know, I, I asked Tammy to step in as interim CFO several months ago. She has done an excellent job, and I have announced, and I would hope that you would join me in congratulating, that Tammy Fulbright is now the permanent CFO of ByState Development. She has done an excellent job, and she is one of the professionals that are helping to make a difference and hopefully moving the policies forward that you are asking us to implement. So I want to congratulate Tammy, and I want to introduce her to the board as the permanent CFO of ByState Development. Thank you, Tammy. Congratulations, Tammy.
Well deserved, well deserved.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Zimmerman. That's all I have.
Is there any unscheduled business, Talby?
No, Commissioner.
Perfect. Myra, could you provide us dates for future meetings, please?
Yes, the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, June 25th at 8:30 a.m., and currently, no meetings are scheduled for the month of July.
Thank you. It does look like we need to go to an executive session, so I need a motion that this committee go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal, confidential, or privileged matters as permitted under ByState Development Board Policy, Chapter 10, Section 10.080 D1 Legal, D2 Real Estate, excuse me, and D10 Audit.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
The motion passed. We are in open session. Thank you.
Thank you. The committee is now reconvened to open session. We have a few, a few motions I'm going to request, so I'm going to start with, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 19th, 2021 AFA Committee Executive Session as a closed record?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Windmiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney.
Aye.
Commissioner Galladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
The motion passed.
Do I also have a motion to accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners the draft Passenger Revenue Department Working Funds Audit Report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Windmiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney.
Aye.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Galladay.
Yes.
The motion passed.
Do I have a motion to accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners the draft Armored Car Loomis Contract Audit as presented?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Windmiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney.
Aye.
Commissioner Galladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
The motion passed.
Do I have a motion to accept and forward to the Board of Commissioners the Gulfstream Lease Term Sheet and Consolidated Lease Agreement as presented?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cox.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Galladay.
Yes.
Commissioner Windmiller.
Aye.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Beach.
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Yes.
The motion passed.
If there's no further business, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Done.
And we are ready. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call the Operations Committee meeting to order Friday, May 21st, 2021, at 9:57. Will you please call the roll, Myra?
Commissioner Windmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Galladay.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Beach. Commissioner Zimmerman.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Costello. Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Gladney.
Present.
Thank you. Were there any public comment cards submitted today?
Yes, Chair, we received one public comment card. It is from Mr. Derek Osborne. His topic was bus not showing up. His comment was, "On May 10th, the 97 Delmar westbound did not show up at 3:18 p.m. at Delmar and Kings Highway. This is the third time in three weeks that a scheduled bus has failed to show. I contacted the Director of Facilities and was informed there is a service issue. After reviewing the new promotional ads, I am forced to conclude that clearly Metro can't get me where I need to go when I need to be there. I can only guess how many other riders this has happened to. As we try to press people to get back to work, how can we be assured public transportation will get us there and back? I have lost faith in Metro and am forced to find other alternatives. It is my sincere hope that the Board will look into why buses aren't where they are supposed to be and when they are supposed to be there. Since you have lost me as a patron, in addition to the fact the system is bleeding riders, I hope for other riders that these issues can be corrected."
Thank you, Myra.
Well, can we, I know we don't respond to public comments or we can't, but can we get an update on that? Email, whatever, just something?
Yes, Commissioner. We have. We have responded to Mr. Osborne. Here is the backdrop, Commissioners. We are short on bus operators. We are currently 54 operators down on a headcount requirement of about 900. We are working to recruit and train operators. We're also experiencing increased absenteeism. So in addition to that workforce shortage, we are requiring a larger extra board to operate. So we have, in the past three weeks, had a difficult time executing some of our service. We are utilizing all of our operator resources. We are also using transit service managers and service area managers to drive. We are recruiting our operators to double over and work their scheduled day off within our DOT hours of service limitations to move us through this time. Our first class will graduate and go into service in mid-June, and then we'll have successive classes graduating every eight weeks or so thereafter, while also taking a look at our service level to make any choices about curtailing service for our August service change temporarily as our workforce ramps up. Our General Manager of Metro Bus, Trinise Winters, has been in direct contact with this customer and has had a very productive conversation, and it is my hope that we will be able to retain him and other customers who have been experienced by our workforce shortage these past weeks. Any questions about that?
Okay. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Item number four is approval of the minutes of the April 8th, 2021 Operations Committee Open Meeting. The minutes have been provided to you for review. If you have no changes, additions, edits, I will need a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item number five, Metro Transit Agency Safety Plan. I believe this is Talby and Andrew Giasse.
Thank you, Chair. That's right. So our first, what is called PTAS, so Public Agency Safety Transit Plan, was submitted last year on time in the July program, in the July required timeframe. And this is a revision of that plan. We, we did get very positive comments from our state's safety oversight partners in developing this plan. Very confident in it. I think the team has done a very good job. Many transit agencies across the country did not meet that timeline of last year, but our team did. And that has been a credit to, of course, both operating and safety staff. We do hold regular monthly meetings with our state's safety oversight teams from both Missouri and Illinois. Those have been going very, very well. And that really concludes my comments unless there's any specifics having to do with the PTAS, which is in your packet. Thank you.
Thanks, Talby. Any comments? I, I need a motion to approve the safety plan.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those signify, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item number six is informational only. It's an operations report from Jessica Efford Miller.
Good morning again, Commissioners. I'm happy to share our operations report with you today. We have a rather full agenda, and I realize that the clock is ticking on. As we approach the summer board recess, we're also ramping up with a tremendous amount of activity that's associated with our pandemic recovery program and our ongoing capital and operating programs. We are going to make, be making big investments in the next year in both service and our capital improvement program. Today, I want to spend just a few minutes walking you through some of those high visibility initiatives that you're going to see later in today's meeting through briefing papers. I'm hoping to set the stage so that you understand how each of these programs fits within our operating and capital investment programs and how and when we'll move forward. Please feel free to stop and ask questions about any of the four topics I'm going to review briefly today. So first up, I want to give you an update on where we are at with our pandemic recovery program. I know we're all fatigued from talking about our COVID-19 operational response, but one important item is our employee vaccination program. This has remained a high priority for us since very early in calendar year 2020, and we ramped up at the beginning of this calendar year with what I think is a very strong COVID-19 vaccine management and communication program. And we've shared updates with this commission on that. So to date, here's where we sit. As of right now, about 40% of our BSD team members are fully vaccinated. So that's two weeks post-second shot. That's not enough, and we're working very diligently to increase that number. In fact, we had vaccine events last week and then tomorrow for first rounds of Pfizer injections. Once we count the second dose for those team members, we'll be at about 45% vaccinated, and we're getting new team members self-reporting all of the time for those whom choose to vaccinate outside of us. Our vaccine management program has included these two series of onsite vaccinations in partnership with the Illinois Department of Health and Eastside Health District and now St. Louis County at our Missouri operating facilities. We've also done, I think, the strong communication program. You've seen the Ask the Doctor campaign, and we are pushing this out via notifications to our employees, text messages, emails, and in-person contact from manager to each of our team members has occurred at least two times on the subject of vaccination. As of tomorrow, we'll be at about 45% through the second shot, and I think that compares favorably when we look at vaccination rates nationwide and within the local jurisdictions that we serve. You see those on the screen. So we tend to be in the low to mid-30s for adults fully vaccinated, whereas we're at 40 and knocking on the door, 45%. Any questions about employee vaccination before I move on? Okay.
Yeah, we talked to, this is Justin. Hey, good morning. So thank you for the report on this. And I think, I think to date, you know, I've, I've liked a lot of the things we're doing, but in my opinion, it seems like we've kind of exhausted the effectiveness of some of these past, you know, the, the past items or actions we were, we're taking. Because I think certainly that the numbers are, in my opinion, are not where we need to be. The numbers that we were provided in, in closed session for frontline operators, I think is below the, the regional average. So I, I just encourage us to, you know, think outside the box or maybe take new or innovative approaches to this. Again, I think some, some of the, the bonuses or the day offs, I think that's great. I think we should continue to do it. But certainly, if we need to sweeten the pot a little bit, to do something before we, you know, try punitive measures, maybe we won't, but I would, I would suggest that we do that. I think, you know, we can't force people to use the system, but this is something that, you know, we have a certain degree of control over what we do as an organization and what our employees do. And to me, the number one thing with COVID ridership recovery should be to get our workforce in a position to be safe and to be safe for the public. I just fear that, you know, I don't want to speak for, and I know Herb does a lot with the vaccination in St. Clair County, but I feel like the window here, I hope we're not a few weeks too late in doing some of this because the interest has certainly dropped as the case count has dropped. And I just, you know, maybe I'm being a little overly cautious, but, and hopefully this is, you know, soon going to be behind us and it's not a concern. But, you know, if we don't get to the vaccination levels where we should be, and then in the fall, when the weather gets colder, we're dealing with the virus again, you know, I just hope we didn't waste an opportunity. So I know we talked about some things that are coming down the pipe in closed session. I won't repeat them, but I encourage us to kind of go big and go quicker. So that's my comment.
Noted, Commissioner. We are and we will. So we have plateaued, you're right. So within ByState and then I think nationwide too, that initial demand, that surge for individuals who are vaccine-seeking has now passed, and we're getting smaller numbers trickling in, and it's not enough. 40, 45% is not enough. So we are going to be more aggressive. I think the program we've launched to date is aggressive and strong when we compare ourselves to transit industry and local peers even, but we do have to do more. We have a population that is, to an extent, vaccine reluctant. We've got some initiatives planned that we will announce soon, and we're working in partnership with labor to help try and engage more of our frontline employees in particular. Anything else on vaccination? Okay.
Is there a reason, or are you getting any kind of, I guess, compliance saying the reason why they don't want to take the destination?
You know, Commissioner Brown, we're getting a lot of, I just want to wait and see. I want to see how this goes for the people around me. A lot of also, you know, I don't get the flu shot. I don't want to get this. I'm young, I'm healthy, or I've already had COVID. And so we're working to address, to really make sure we've got our hands wrapped around those vaccine hesitations, and then we're working to address them. And I do think at this point, it's going to be that added incentive, and it's going to be that one-on-one communication, peer-to-peer and manager-to-peer about what vaccination means for you. We continue to make this a front-of-mind topic in all of our discussions with our team.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner. Moving right along, let's talk about welcoming customers back. I want to give you an overview about some of the programs that we are launching or already, whoops, have underway. So our COVID pandemic recovery service level is pretty much in place with that March 15th service change. So we're operating 89% of Metro Bus and 94% of pre-pandemic MetroLink. Ridership continues to hover month over month at about 50% pre-pandemic. We've got a long way to go to pushing that up. We're continuing to focus on frequent service in the markets that remain strong, and we're seeing growth in those markets. We're also, we've made some adjustments to respond to changes in travel demand throughout the pandemic, really focusing on trying to get those essential workers where they need to be. We're continuing to supplement our fixed road, bus, and rail service with other solutions, including Via microtransit. Last month, we expanded the footprint of Via in southwest St. Louis County and greater north St. Louis County. That program has been very successful. I see more of that to come in the future. And we're also utilizing our partnership with Lyft to help our customers get, make that first last mile portion of their trip, and that's going well. Our capital improvement program, I'm very excited about. It includes a number of projects that are explicitly focused on improving the customer experience and helping us to retain and attract riders back to the Metro Transit system. We're focused on accessibility for everyone, removing some of the frequent barriers to transit utilization and to delivering a ride that is safe, comfortable, and attractive. So let's take a look at some of those capital programs. Oh, before we do marketing, marketing communications, you're going to hear from Ted Zimmerman later in our meeting today about our marketing programs moving forward. But we have a comprehensive marketing and communication strategy that is in lockstep with our capital and operating programs that's intended to really meet customers where they are, learn from what we've, act on what we've learned from them about reasons why people may or may not ride moving through the recovery process. And we're utilizing a number of platforms, including digital messaging, billboards, a lot of geo-targetings, of focusing on places where we have restored service and where we see ridership potential to send direct messages through digital to those customers. And the marketing team has produced a number of videos that we're leveraging across multiple platforms, celebrating the return to, to normalcy for the communities that we serve, the experience of Metro Transit, and the ways we can help people connect. And some of those videos even highlight the contributions of our own frontline heroes. I think the marketing team has shared that with this commission. So taking a look at capital, I want to give you an overview, two broad categories of capital investments that we're going to Two broad categories of capital investments that we're going to discuss later today. One is fleet modernization and another is fare collection. So in transit systems like ours, fleet modernization is typically the largest piece of our capital investment program. That includes replacement, maintenance, and upgrade programs. We're entering a phase, though, right now of really unprecedented investment in the metro transit fleet in part due to our very first replacement of our lot rail vehicles. I would call your attention to the capital budget that this board passed last month. Of that capital investment program, forty-six percent of that, or $272 million, is focused on the maintenance or the replacement of Metro's fleet. Within that program, we've got a number of, I think, really exciting initiatives. One is our shift away from fossil fuels and diesel fuel in particular toward cleaner energy. Now, we're developing a baseline program that will eventually address multiple aspects of Metro's rolling stock, including revenue and non-revenue vehicles and facilities. Our first phase is our battery electric bus program. As we speak, we are nearing the final pieces of testing of our charging infrastructure at our North Broadway Transit Center and our Brentwood Metro Bus facility. We have received, tested, and we are ready for service with our fourteen sixty-foot New Flyer buses and our four forty-foot Gilig buses. Those will all operate out of Brentwood. Those sixty-foot buses will all serve the number seventy grand, our busiest metro bus route in the city of St. Louis. We're going to launch that program this summer. So commissioners, please stay tuned for more information and events as we celebrate the launch of battery electric technology. Another shift in our fleet replacement strategy is our bus life cycle. We have historically operated our vehicles with a fifteen-year life cycle, and sometimes we've exceeded that. Those of you who have been with us for a while might recall our million-mile buses. And we're very proud of our award-winning maintenance team's capability to sustain those buses. But we're going to move the milestone of end of life from fifteen years down to twelve to fourteen years. That will allow us to have a more modern fleet, a more reliable fleet, and a lower maintenance cost per mile for the fleet, which is very important for keeping our operating costs down over the life cycle of these vehicles. We will still well exceed FTA's minimum years and miles requirement for these vehicles. We're also making big investments in the Coleride fleet. For a number of years, we were delayed due to inavailability of parts like chassis within the marketplace for our Coleride vans. We're experiencing some of those delays again, but we are working toward pushing those vehicles back down to a three-year life cycle. And that's so important for delivering high-quality, modern equipment to this essential transit market and for maintaining a reliable fleet. We've also got new technology coming with new buses, and for some vehicles, we're retrofitting that. Last year, we talked about our mobile CCTV project, which is well underway for delivering camera system upgrades across our mobile fleet. And right now, we are in the final testing stages for Wi-Fi aboard our buses, trains, and at our transit centers will soon also have a Wi-Fi program aboard our paratransit vans. That is so important for ensuring customers have access to the information that they want to get and can have a pleasant experience, but also access to tools that Metro is pushing out, like trip planning and fare payment options. So stay tuned for that discussion. Now, our biggest ticket item is light rail vehicles. You're going to hear from Darren Curry later in our meeting today about our LRV fleet modernization program. I want to just give you a quick overview. So Metro Link opened in nineteen ninety-three. And so what that means is the initial series of light rail vehicles we acquired back then are almost thirty years old and are nearing their end of life. Thirty years is about as long as we can get out of light rail vehicles. And in fact, we put more miles on our trains than our peers do over the course of that thirty years. Last year, we conducted in partnership with a light rail consultant firm called LTK, a very detailed assessment of our fleet that helped us craft our fleet replacement and modernization strategy and helped us define which of our trains we can keep and overhaul and which of them we actually need to replace. And I've shared the age of our fleet on my screen here, so you can just get an idea of where we're at. So those Series One trains, thirty-one, are really due for replacement. And right behind them is those Series Two trains. All of our vehicles have been acquired over time in concert with our initial construction, expansion, and service increases over the years. So this is the first replacement. We're going to be engaging technical assistance as we spec for the first time since the nineteen eighties, LRV technology. This is not off-the-shelf equipment. Every system is different. And while we'll be acquiring new lot rail vehicles that we're going to be operating into 2050, they still actually have to be compatible with those existing cars on the system, our stations, and our operating facilities. So there's a lot of complexity there. Any questions about LRV overview? Okay. I want to move right along and talk for a moment about fare collection. You've got two briefing papers coming up today on fare collection. In October, we did a deep dive into what is our fare collection program and its component parts. So quick overview, fare policy, that's the framework, foundational principles, and goals for our fare program. You know, fare programs in transit systems are complex, but they are essential for collecting revenue to support our operating budget. You'll see a fare program and policy proposal in fall of 2021. We'll be bringing that to the public in the coming months, and we're doing some of the final modeling on that right now. Now, fare structure is the types of tickets and passes and fare opportunities that we offer. Fair pricing is how much we charge for them. And then think of fare systems as the mechanism for delivering that fare system to our customers as well as the backend systems. So today, we've got a briefing paper before you that is related to the fare collection system. So the mechanism piece of that. We've embarked on the development and deployment of our next-generation fare collection system. Over the past couple of years, we have been very closely monitoring the marketplace. And we've also been experimenting with some tools and technology, including mobile ticketing. We continue to have a mobile ticketing program, a pilot that has been extended through a vendor called Masabi, and that replaced our first mobile ticketing pilot with a vendor called Movable. We've learned a lot through that and have received strong approval from our customers. So today, we're at the point where our fare collection systems are nearing the end of their useful life. All of the equipment that we purchase, including buses, ticket vending machines, and validators, all have a useful life, and we're now planning for their replacement. The first phase, though, in fare collection systems today, it's not going out and purchasing new fare boxes. It really is that electronic system. That's the backbone of fare collection today. We're working to design a program that is really focused explicitly on the experience of our customers. We want to deliver fair options and pricing that's equitable and that reduces barriers to using transit while still allowing Metro to achieve our passenger revenue goals. So fare collection systems today, while they're not centered around the box, they are more centered around the baseline technology. And fare collection companies out there, including our legacy companies that have been with us for decades, and newer emergent firms are delivering fare collection programs through a software-as-a-service model. And that's the approach that we've chosen to embark on. The first phase of that is our electronic fairing system. And that's what the procurement that we're talking about today focuses on. So the electronic fairing system is delivered in a series of different phases. First thing is we're going to address the mobile app and ticketing because we've already got a mobile application in place, and now we want to expand that and fine-tune it. In fact, the vendor that we're recommending to this board today is Masabi, who happens to be our current mobile app vendor. All the while, we'll be developing the underlying software. And the software really falls into two broad categories. There's customer experience. So think of that as a website that the customers could interact with to load their mobile or to load their stored value card or to monitor their balance or to plan their trip and pay for their trip seamlessly. Then there's the agency and partner experience, which allows us to monitor balances, push out new tools and pass programs, and also to work with our partners who are our big consumers. Think our university pass partners and employer partners. And then there's the hardware component. That's, of course, the most visible in the public view. And the first phase of that will be onboard validators aboard Metro Bus, followed by validators at our Metro Link stations. And then we'll be launching our first fair media, new fair media into the public in 2022. And those will be fair media that interact with those new validators. We don't have validators today onboard our Metro Buses, our stored value gateway cards. Those are a tap, not quite the same as a validator. So all of the mobile solutions that we're using right now are what we call a flash pass. They require visual inspection by Metro Bus operators and our fare enforcers. So we're not pushing many products to mobile right now. So you can't get a monthly or a weekly pass on mobile. It really is just a one-ride and a two-hour pass. With electronic validation, this really opens up the realm of pass options that we can offer both on mobile and stored value. And then finally, the ticket vending machine and fare box replacement will begin scoping and procurement next year. All of that equipment will have been replaced once it has reached its end of useful life. That concludes the operations report I wanted to share with you. And again, we've got a few papers coming up that are going to touch on these. Are there any questions I can answer that are top of mind right now? Thank you.
I have one on the operator shortage, not specifically on this presentation. And this might be something to address later. But, you know, in reaction to that, to that comment, we mentioned the shortage. And you said there's a plan to sort of get more folks trained. And I understand there is a lag time with that because there's obviously training and everything else. But, and this may be an offline discussion, but how, do we have folks in the pipeline to get them trained to fill that shortage to make sure that we're able to, you know, serve everything the system needs? And then secondly, to the extent that there are at least temporary disruptions in service because of an operator shortage, are we sure that that message is getting out to the riders adequately? That, you know, your bus might not be coming so that these sorts of things aren't happening again? So one, are we fixing the operator shortage? And then two, are we, are we making sure that folks are getting notified in the meantime if there are changes?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. So we do have a pipeline. I'll tell you, it's not as strong as we would like. We are having a hard time recruiting and, and training new employees. So it's the recruiting side. We've got job fairs lined up. They're taking place now. We have virtual interviews scheduled. We're seeing fewer people actually show up and participate than are actually scheduled. So we're working with our talent management team to increase our numbers. And we're also having conversations about incentives for new hires. For those of you who were or weren't with us in our last collective bargaining agreement, we really did include a number of things to improve pay for those new employees so that we could improve our attraction and retention rate. So I'm hopeful that those will help. We are certainly not alone in the marketplace when it comes to struggling with workforce shortages. So we're going to have to be creative when it comes to incenting people to join the Metro team. Likewise, we've got an incentive program in place. We just started this week to encourage our team members to double over and work their regular day off to cover those runs. So it's a challenge. It's a challenge because of the amount of training time it's going to be with us for several months. I'm hopeful that we'll stabilize in the fall. Now, in terms of providing information to customers, it is essential. We're pushing out what we call rider alerts. And we have paired our customer service and our bus operations team very closely. So if we know we're going to miss a trip, our bus operations team pushes that to customer service, who can then send out an alert to our customers. We're also working between bus operations dispatch and our planning team to ensure that we're covering our most essential trips. So if a route doesn't run often, we're making sure that we cover all of the runs, all of the trips, that is, on that route. For our last trips, late in the evening, we're ensuring that we cover all of those runs. So every night, I often find that it's our management personnel. They're all out there driving to make sure we don't leave anybody stranded at the end of the service days. We're trying to make the best out of this temporary situation. I don't want to minimize the, the impact and potential impact this has on our customers, but I do want to provide you some assurance that our team is focused on fielding that service on a day-to-day basis while we work to strengthen the pipeline.
Thank you for your answer, and just please continue to keep us updated on the, on the operator shortage and, you know, the plan to get that covered. But it sounds like you're working on it, so thank you.
Yes, Commissioner.
Are there other questions or comments on the operations report? Hearing none. That's for information. Thanks very much, Jessica. I think the, the next piece is also you and Jessica Gershman, and it's a pilot fare program to promote access equity and ridership.
Yep. Yeah, good morning again, Commissioner. So I'll take this one. So we have before you for information, a pilot fare program, three different products. This falls under staff authorization to offer pilot fare or promotional programs for a period of up to one hundred and eighty days. What we have proposed is three different programs that are intended to help increase our ridership by delivering fair media and fair options that are going to be more resonant with our customers and also to help alleviate some of our pain points within the system. And that's the paratransit piece. So these three programs are our Gateway Go program. That's our youth fare discount program. Now, this is something that we offered in the summers of 2018 and 2019 to individuals aged thirteen to twenty-five, who normally would be full fare unless they're affiliated with an entity that offers a program like a U-Pass. It's a summer-only program. It would, it would operate basically June one through Labor Day, and it allows those individuals to obtain either a discounted one-ride boarding or a three-month pass to ride throughout the summer months. We think this is a good way to help us restore ridership and to make use of some of that available capacity. And it also aligns well with the priorities and initiatives of our local government partners. This program would be offered on our gateway card, our stored value card, or potentially our mobile ticketing solution. And we're working through the implementation of that right now. So I am very supportive of this program, and it's something that we'll ask this board to take up along with our funding partners, of course, in the more permanent fare policy we'll be discussing this fall. The next item is no fare for fixed route service for ADA eligible paratransit customers. Let me explain what that is and what it is not. So our Coleride service requires eligibility. So you have to have some kind of physician assessment and go through an assessment that says, yes, indeed, there are reasons why it might be difficult for you to access fixed route. Therefore, you are eligible, according to the Americans with Disabilities Act, for paratransit service. Now, our paratransit service is excellent. It's door-to-door service. It does require reservations a day or more in advance. So it's not as flexible as the service that's enjoyed by our fixed group customers. But it's also our most expensive service to operate as a transit entity, and this is true across our industry. So making fare, making fixed route, that's bus and rail only, free for our paratransit customers. It is our hope that this will offer increased freedom of mobility for paratransit customers who also tend to be lower income on the balance than our fixed route riders, while at the same time alleviating demand on Coleride. So Coleride is operating right now at about ninety percent of pre-pandemic demand. It's very high, and we're experiencing some of the workforce challenges now. So we can reduce some strain on our operating budget and our workforce if we're able to ship people off Coleride and onto fixed route. This wouldn't be a requirement, of course, and it requires a number of supporting programs, like our travel training program and some of the other great communications tools that our ADA services team actually offers. This is becoming an increasingly common model within the transit industry as agencies like ours struggle with this expensive service and workforce challenges. So we would join our peers in cities like Boston and San Mateo by offering this program. We want to try it on a six-month trial basis and see where that takes us. By the numbers, I always like to estimate our savings. So if we shifted just two point five percent of our current Coleride trips over to fixed route, the annualized savings, and those savings would be in non-expended Coleride operating costs, would be half a million dollars. So it is significant, and it is worth a conversation. Our ADA services team stands ready right now to send gateway cards that will be free fare. So there has to be a fair media tied to it to our two hundred and fifty most active paratransit users, along with information. along with information about the program. They're supported by our contractor MTM, who has experience with transitions just like this and is ready to support through travel training and walking our customers through this. Third and final promotional program is just a discount to our one-day pass. So our one-day pass right now is $7.50, pretty high. And it's certainly more than two round-trip tickets, which would be $6. And we're challenged at this moment because we're not offering our two-hour pass, which is the tear-off transfer. Historically, that's $3 and is offered on the bus. We eliminated that back in March of last year when we suspended fare collection and we, we never have resumed it. We're offering a mobile ticket. We're offering a $1.01 ride on bus to try and provide options for customers who can't access mobile. This is another temporary tool, really aimed at customers who can't access mobile by making that one-day scratch-off pass less expensive. This would be replaced moving forward and absorbed in to our next generation fare collection program. I think that this is a good move and we have some urgency to try and make fares more affordable for our cash-paying, multi-vehicle trip-making customers. Any questions about these three promotional programs?
Questions from the board? Jessica, I just have one, and that's about the, the no fare fixed route, moving people from caller ride to fixed routes. Does that include some of the first mile, last mile kind of vendors that you're also using?
This does not, Commissioner, this includes bus and light rail only. And the idea there, and this is again how we're structuring it in the pilot, is to try and make use of that capacity that we have without increasing or just shifting the operating cost. Now, just a little bit of foreshadowing, where we are going in the future with some of our service is trying to provide the same kind of service or shared service that can accommodate some of our ADA customers and the general public with demand-responsive service. That's not this, though.
I wonder how much uptick you'll have or uptake you'll have if people, you know, it's a lot easier to get picked up at your door than have to go to a light rail station or a bus stop. I just, I, I think it's a great idea and I think it's worth pursuing. I just wonder whether or not it's going to be successful.
It is, it is. My expectations are modest. That's why I'm offering that 2.5%. I want to note, though, that the rollout of this free fare board fixed route, which would occur on June 21st, it coincides with resumption of cash, cash fare collection on caller ride. So customers on caller ride haven't been paying a cash fare since last March. We didn't have a mechanism. It was, it was hand-to-hand cash historically. We have now received and installed new fare boxes on caller ride. So on June 21st, our caller ride customers will now have to pay a fare. And so there's, you know, that's a little bit of a deterrent to utilizing service while at the same moment, we're going to be offering this great opportunity. So that pairing is quite deliberate.
That makes sense. Thank you. Anyone else? Thanks very much. I think we can move on to item number eight, which is the contract award for light rail vehicle professional engineering consulting services. This is Jessica and Darren Curry.
I'm going to take a break and ask Darren to provide an overview of this contract.
Okay, good morning. I'm presenting to the operations committee for discussion referral to the board of commissioners for approval, a request to authorize the president, CEO, to enter into a contract with Hatch LTK not to exceed 7,190,996 for light rail professional engineering consulting services. Metro will partner with the LRB engineering consulting firm, acting as a technical extension of the LRB maintenance department. The firm will also act as Metro's onsite inspector during the manufacturing process and also during the delivery, testing, and commissioning onsite at Metro. Some of the key deliverables, vehicle performance, infrastructure interface, operator and passenger amenities, and some potential alternatives. One of which is the LRB. We want to evaluate the feasibility of operating a single-length LRB in lieu of the two-car. We want to explore the possibility of autonomous operation. We are, want to study the feasibility of hybrid battery electric, which will allow us more flexibility, especially through construction areas and zones. We're also interested in quick change tires. This could reduce the labor by 50% for that particular maintenance function. We're also interested, looking at the feasibility of joint procurement, leveraging economy of scale and possibly speeding up the delivery dates. On February, Bi-State issued a solicitation for a light rail vehicle professional engineering consulting services. April, no, in response, we received two proposals. One from Hatch LTK, the other from STV. In April, an evaluation process consisted of a team of six individuals representing areas from light rail vehicle maintenance and the engineering teams. The evaluation team identified as LTK as the highest-ranked firm in support of the agency's light rail system. So management recommends that operations committee accepts and forwards to the board of commissioners for their approval to enter into a contract with Hatch LTK for the amount not to exceed 7,190,996 or five base years. Is there any questions?
Seeing none, I would-
Chair, can I make, can I make one comment? I apologize.
If it's quick.
It's definitely quick. So as you can see, contained within the contract and page 200, I just wanted to mention that a very good idea that we are pursuing within there is the idea of the one-car contest that is within there on page 200. A great idea advanced by our partners at St. Clair County and other places. So this, that is within there. I assured our leadership there that it would be in there and it is. I like to call it super train, but just to sell it a little bit. But it would be a great opportunity and much easier from a security standpoint if there's one continuous vehicle. That's, that's the extent of my comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Tommy. Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, I would ask for motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next item is number nine, the contract award for the electronic fare collection system. And it's Jessica Meford Miller again.
Hello again. So we have before you commissioners, a white paper requesting your approval and forwarding to the full board, an award of a contract in the amount not to exceed $3.5 million for an electronic fare collection system. We're calling our earlier discussion, this would be the backbone of our fare collection modernization program. This contract includes a suite of software, hardware, and professional services that are outlined in your white paper. They would be executed over a series of years. And then this is the basis upon which all of our subsequent phases, including our validators, our ticket vending machines, and our fare boxes would be tied to. This offers increased opportunities for Metro to offer different fare media in the very near future and different fare products to our customers. We'll need this to deliver the fair policy, pricing, and structure program that we'll be presenting with, to you earlier next year. Now, this procurement has been conducted by a multidisciplinary team here at Metro in coordination with St. Clair County Transit District. Paul Stefanski, our IT operations systems managers on hand should you have any technical questions. This team did a fantastic job of scoping this to reflect our current and future needs. They received 10 competitive proposals and reviewed them very quickly because we are moving through this program with, while great caution, also a sense of urgency and purpose. So this contract, again, is not to exceed amount $3.5 million for professional software and hardware. Any questions?
Yes, several. Madam Chair, can I?
Please.
Jessica, Metro had spent money in the past on the gateway card, am I correct?
Yes, Commissioner.
And do you know off the top of your head, or do you have what we spent on that program?
Yes, Commissioner, I can resend the white paper that was shared with this commission in October of 2020 that details the gateway card.
Okay, but do you know what that, what we spent for that, that program back then?
Commissioner, I'll have to recall that the, these specific pieces. I recall that gateway card is part of a much larger program that included hardware. And so I can, I can send you that paper. I'd rather not try and fumble through that in this meeting now.
Okay, when you talk about these handheld devices, it's been brought to my attention and some of the other commissioners that there were some of them that was in storage that had never been implemented. Do you know anything about that?
Those are handheld validators that are to be used by Metro fare inspectors, plus also our law enforcement partners who are patrolling the system. We are utilizing some of those handheld validators, though not all of the entities aboard our system are utilizing them. We did, in consult with our IT team, cease development of that gateway card program and we've reviewed that. So that means we're utilizing gateway card. In fact, some of those fare products that I mentioned in the promotional program, including fixed route for pair transit customers and the, the Gateway Go Youth Fair Program, those are going to be deployed on smart cards. So we've got smart cards out there, we're utilizing them. Our customers are tapping them aboard our buses at the fare box and they're tapping them at our validators aboard MetroLink. When those systems become obsolete, they will be, need to be replaced and that's what we're discussing here.
So, and I don't know if you can see these, I have gateway cards that is holding up. One of them has a $7 balance on it and the other one was, has a zero balance on it that was provided to me. And the, the information that I received was, is that our operators have no way to validate if there's credits due on, and these are owed or what? How do we in the future, are we going to make sure that, you know, we spent a lot of money on the gateway? And I'm interested in knowing what, you know, I want to know the total package of this. I mean, you're saying three, not to exceed $3.5 million on this part of it. Somebody has got to have some figures on what this total package is going to cost us.
We do have estimates as these are all included in our capital investment program, Commissioner Simmons, the detailed cost, and we, I can provide that again. I don't want to sift through the capital budget in this meeting. We can provide our estimated cost for this fare collection system replacement. Going back to gateway card functionality and verification, in fact, our customers do aboard Metro bus and the operator sees that it's valid or it's not valid. So the operator does not see, nor do they need to see what the balance is on that card. And it's the same kind of interaction at the MetroLink station validator today. You get a green light or you get a red light, depending on whether or not that, that card is valid.
So is it a fair statement to say that this, the old program didn't, didn't work? It was, it failed?
It's not, Commissioner, as, again, it's in place today. So the old program is, does not have the functionality. It doesn't have the opportunities of the fare collection modernization program. But it is in effect. We're continuing to utilize it and will continue to utilize it until it reaches obsolescence and is replaced by new equipment and technology. So just like our vehicles, our buses and our light rail vehicles, as we've discussed earlier today, require replacement and end of life, so too does this equipment. And we have tremendous opportunities in the marketplace today to offer different fare media, different fare systems, and different, different fairing equipment than we did when these legacy systems were acquired. Some of them were specced as long as 15 years ago.
And, and this, the, the funding is 3.5 million? Some of it is taken, it's got to be approved by St. Clair County Transit, is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner. Yeah, this is a system-wide project.
And then the, the rest of that money comes from where?
The rest of the funding for fare collection is coming from Section 5307 in Missouri and Prop M, which is typically our source of local match for capital programs such as this. So this is 80% federal and 20% local, Commissioner, in Missouri.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. That was great.
One other, one other question I just thought of. The interest that would be charged on this is like, do you know what that is, 18%? Or something of that sort?
Commissioner, I think you mean the credit card processing fees and vendor fees?
Yes.
So that's something that our finance team is engaged with Masabi in negotiation on. And so the processing fee has yet to be determined. What I can tell you is that the vendor fees presented by Masabi, in fact, the total overall cost presented by Masabi was the lowest amongst those 10 proposers. They were top ranking in both cost and technical capacity.
And the reason why I asked that, I was providing information that our partners over here in Madison County Transit are paying a substantial lower fee of like 4% to 5%. So I would ask that somebody check into that. You know, the difference between what I was provided, about 18% to 4% to 5% is a big difference to me.
We can provide you with it. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So Jessica, thanks for doing the research on this for you and your, you and your team. I, I've heard from some commissioners, just some general concerns about how this portion of the new electronic fare collection system is going to fit into an overall fare collection system umbrella. And so I'm, I'm concerned that I don't have the full picture of what it is this is going to do. What, what we're buying, what the customer will do, and how it will fit into other hardware and software components that undoubtedly we'll have to have. So can you, we're getting late in this in, in terms of our meaning. So what I'm trying to figure out is, do we need a more robust conversation about the entire system in terms of a fare collection system before we can vote on this? Because I have heard from some commissioners after the report, the book came out, that the board book came out, that there, they have some concerns.
So I've, I've provided a high-level overview. Paul Stefanski, who is the architect of the, the systems, the technical piece of this. Paul, perhaps you can weigh in and perhaps there's something I'm missing in my delivery.
You know what, if, if I can interrupt for a minute, I'm sorry, Jessica. Chair, if you, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Just in interest of, of time, I'm, I am getting concerned about this and this is a big policy decision. I think the concern, and I don't want to speak for the commissioners, but I'm, I'm trying to get an idea of where we're headed, is that the board feels that the context of this one element into a larger fare program, which is a major, major piece of investment, that, that is absolutely correct. This is just the entry point to many other systems which then would be invested in, have not, has not been adequately discussed as far as, you know, the context of the overall system. And, and some more detail and discussion is needed. And for instance, and some of that detail is behind a decision that was made, true, by, by me, to, to move away from our older system, which was not operating to this, to, as, as we thought it should. It didn't make sense to, to invest into the old system. And we made that decision and passed it through the board some time ago. And now we're moving on, okay? And, but that context is important, clearly. And maybe we need to do a little bit of a deeper dive about that. And there are, of course, an ocean, what I'm worried about is there's an ocean of details associated with how the validation works and so on. And we are getting late in the meeting. And what I would maybe ask, if, if it is amenable, is that- And what I would maybe ask, if, if it is amenable, is that maybe we table this idea for now? And I ask Jessica, along with Paul, to provide kind of a little bit more detail on, on how to provide that information to the board so that we can do a little bit deeper dive. So that's my request, Chair, if, if, if you would consider.
Thanks. Unfortunately, I don't think you can offer a motion, so.
Yeah, I know, I was, I was actually going to move to do that anyway, so I'll make a motion, somebody can second it, we'll discuss it, but I'll move to table Agenda Item Number Nine.
I'll second it.
Great. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So Commissioner, so I'm clear on our tasking. I think what we need to do is to prepare a comprehensive overview, inclusive of some of those pieces we reviewed in the fall.
I'm in the middle of a vote.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just want to get the vote completed, but, and then, please, we'll turn it over to you. All those in favor, again, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Fine, and that, that motion is just to pull this item back. So now we can have a discussion, Jessica, on what, what it is the board would like to see.
So if I'm hearing correctly, we'll prepare a memorandum to this board that outlines the comprehensive fare program, inclusive of milestones for policy structure and the various pieces of hardware and software equipment that would be acquired, plus the capital cost estimates that we have to date for those systems. So relating the policy and pricing to the fare collection systems, and recapping some of that which we provided in October, plus addressing Commissioner Simmons' questions regarding vendor cost and processing fees.
Are there other things that you would like to see in this? Other commissioners? Here's what I want. I want a comprehensive overview of what our fare system is going to look like during this contract period, which is three to five years. You know, what is the equipment that we need? What, both on the light rail bus and bus vehicles? What do customers need? How does this fit into our overall fare collection policy? I just feel like it's really hard to do this piecemeal, and perhaps, Jessica, in your defense, you might have provided that information to us in the past, but I think with new board members and this being a new subject, we need an entire overview, and then we can then discuss it at the Operations Committee level and at the board level. And anyone else, please chime in if there's something.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll try to think about it a little more in depth before then. I am going to talk to the people at Madison County Transit about this, to see kind of what their, what their kind of thoughts or feedback are, but just to be kind of succinct and at a high level, I, I don't think the prior system worked as well as it could have. And, you know, failure, not failure, but this is the front door to customer service. This is the front door to people using the system. And I, I, I think that, at least me personally, I'm going to be a little more, or want to be a little more involved in this, and maybe have a little more scrutiny in some of this, because we have great staff, we have great people, but I don't think this before, and it happened years ago, but was done as well as it could have. And so I think we just owe it to, the board needs to be a little more involved in this decision, is all I'm going to say, so.
Well, and what I'm, what I'm looking for is to make sure that with this new program, that if there was mistakes or whatever happened in the past, that those aren't made in the past while we're talking about spending this kind of money. So I agree with Justin on that.
Other comments? Thank you. We look forward to having this conversation in the future. Item number 10, Title VI Procedures and Analysis.
I'm going to ask Jessica Gershman to provide you with an update. Our Title VI program for reference, we reviewed it last year. We are required by the Federal Transit Administration to have a board-approved Title VI program. This board already approved our overall program, and we're bringing to you today an update to that program.
That's right, thank you. Yes, and so this item requests consideration and approval of updates of our Title VI analyses. A reminder that this program regulates Metro's, how we provide fair and equitable access to transit services, regardless of race, income, or English language proficiency. So part of the requirement is an equity analysis of major service or fare changes, as well as the regular reporting on the monitoring of service performance. In order to conduct these analyses, Metro first needed to implement a new set of policies around disparate impact and disproportionate burden, which was reviewed by the public and approved by this board in 2020. So staff have since used those new policies to analyze any major service changes, and that includes a retrospective report on the Metro Reimagine change of late 2019. The equity analysis confirmed that the routing and service changes did not have any adverse effects on minority or low-income populations. And in fact, on average, these protected groups experienced increases in service availability. This is because Metro's frequent routes are more commonly located around high, high-demand corridors, and those are located in minority and low-income census block groups. Staff also updated the required ongoing monitoring of transit service metrics, and no disparities were found occurring on routes that primarily serve minority or low-income populations. Finally, staff assessed passenger amenities, so that's bus stops, benches, shelters, and the monitoring confirmed that overall these are equitably placed in the protected population block groups. I'm happy to answer further questions at this time, and recommend that the committee forward the results of this analysis to the full board for their approval.
Thanks, Jessica. Are there questions? I, I just have one quick one. So I appreciate, first of all, I appreciate all of this information, and also that you're keeping such a close eye on such an important issue. Is there any outside validation of this information? So do we have an audit that's done outside of the agency that indicates, you know, that we're meeting these benchmarks?
Sure, and so, so we use, we use tools to aid with that assessment, but really, it's the, every three years, the FTA reviews our program. And so we include the ongoing monitoring, analyses of our, of our service, major service changes and fare changes, and that's a package that gets reviewed by our FTA administrators every three years.
Great, that's very helpful to me, thank you.
Sure.
Rose, I have a question. I know at several of our meetings, when we were having the open meetings, we were having, receiving a lot of complaints concerning the fare, the transfer process, and also the service. Were those complaints looked into, and, and did we make any adjustments there?
Sure, specifically with, with reference to Metro Reimagined. So we, we extensively used customer feedback to make adjustments and tweaks to service, and of course, we've basically spent the last 14 months adjusting service incrementally here and there, and then restoring it. Regarding complaints about fare and transferring, I would say that actually, the new fare, the modernization of the fare program is going to speak to that very concern. And so part of this electronic validation program is to allow for things like fare capping and more equitable and easy-to-use processes for paying that fare and boarding your, your vehicle. So it is all interconnected.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, thank you, Jessica.
Sure.
I need a motion to approve the analysis update.
I so much.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Oh, I'm sorry, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the next item is number 11, Marketing and Strategy and Planning Services, and I would ask Ted Zimmerman for comments.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item 11 is a request for approval and referral to the full board of Commissioners to award a marketing and strategic planning services contract to Wehrmeyer Creative. The briefing paper begins on page 208 of your packet. In February of this year, procurement issued a request for proposals to retain a qualified firm to provide marketing and creative services, brand management council, strategic media, strategic planning, and tactical marketing solutions for bi-state development, Metro Transit, St. Louis Regional Freightway, and the St. Louis Downtown Airport for a period of five years. The contract calls for a base of three years and two option years that can be exercised based upon the contractor's overall performance. You may be curious as to how this contract will benefit bi-state development, the services that, that will be provided. Examples include website maintenance and development for 12 of our websites and digital media, video support such as the welcome back and the team member videos that are currently airing on various digital media services in the region, some of our COVID communications and the videos, as well as the support on internal and communication, internal communications, but also helping us to develop and implement our internal and external messaging strategies. The services and solutions provided under the existing contract over the last 12 months have really been crucial in our ability to quickly and effectively respond to the changing landscape we've experienced throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. Five proposals were received and evaluated by a team of individuals representing Metro, the freightway, our airport, and the marketing and communications team. Two of those firms with the highest overall scores were invited for final presentations. Following those in-person presentations, Wehrmeyer Creative was determined to be the firm with the highest overall score and selected to provide a best and final cost. On page two of, 209 of your packet, we provided an overview of the proposers, their costs and technical scores, as well as the overall total scores. Wehrmeyer's cost is fair and reasonable in comparison to the other proposals that were submitted. Wehrmeyer Creative is also registered as a DBE vendor with bi-state development. Finally, management recommends the Operations Committee approve and forward to the Board of Commissioners for approval the request that the President and CEO enter into a five-year contract with the highest-ranking firm, Wehrmeyer Creative, whose proposal is most advantageous to us, with a price and other factors considered in a not-to-exceed amount of $2,128,500. Are there any questions?
I have a couple. So is that per year, is that over the five years?
That's over the five years.
Okay, and during, say, in the last 12 months, have we cut back on the marketing at all, or?
Um, you know, not necessarily, because when we look at our COVID information and the communications that we had, that we did with that, we actually saw an increase in some of the marketing pieces that we've done. And then focusing on our welcome back strategy and moving through that process, we've increased as well. We've changed some of the strategies in the way that we've done that, instead of, you know, doing sponsorships and various things. We're really focused on our core message of making sure that people know that our system is safe and sound, and that's beyond public safety. It's about how we clean our, our facilities, how our buses are cleaned, and making sure that they look good as we walk through the process. As service has been re-instituted, we geo-fenced and geo-targeted around those areas for about a half a mile. And then looking at some of the large events, like the Cardinals game, opening days and things like that, we're actually looking at our geo-fencing and targeting strategies from that perspective. This year, we also increased or actually started something new, which is translating our publications and our media into various languages. I don't know if you saw the Mosaic Project piece, but you know, all of our COVID information was translated into at least five different languages, and then we've been using the red Latina, as well as the St. Louis Chinese-American in order to promote more of our messaging.
Ted, first of all, I appreciate very much the, the information, and I'm excited that we have a DBE onboard for this, but I have a question. It's in the background piece, it says a DBE goal was not recommended for this project. So how do you determine? And we have a DBE vendor who's going to get the contract if we approve it, so tell me about the disconnect there.
So the, the DBE goal is actually set by procurement when they're reviewing the various options that are available through the process, I guess. That is not something that's determined by the marketing group, but what we look at as a team is looking for that diverse message and audience. And so while we use one firm from that standpoint, and Wehrmeyer is a good example of this, they actually, you know, reach out and actually use other DBEs and look for other resources that really fit into that message for us. So, you know, our, we're being proactive in that perspective of wanting to grow our DBE presence.
So I appreciate that. I guess I'm going to ask my question to procurement then next, because, not today, but there's, going through the board book, there were several contracts, this is more for the board necessarily than you.
Sure.
But there were a lot of contracts that were determined that DBE was not necessary, and I just want to understand that process, so, but thanks for the information.
I apologize that I don't have a direct answer on that, though.
That's okay. Any other questions?
I have just one question for Ted. Ted, what is your staff number in your department?
So my staff number is approximately 19, and that covers everything from metro store to sales to graphics, community engagement, and also communications.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? May have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. I'm assuming that the, the vote still is approved with one, is it one, with one opposed?
Yes, it's still approved.
Thank you. Item number 12, President and CEO Report.
I will, I will be very brief. So I do want to note that I will be sending out this week, we are starting to collect and, and give data on safety and security, and our first quarterly comparative report will be out. That will be under Kevin Scott and Andrea Jumper's work, and that will be to you, since I've been sending you so much information, I'm targeting to send that out on Wednesday. I had that commitment to Commissioner Postello, and we will be fulfilling that, and then, of course, we can review those numbers at the full board meeting on June the 25th. So just wanted to note that that is coming, and in the interest of time, I want to be brief, and that concludes my comments unless there's some specific, oh, and I also, I'm sorry, I will ask Mr. Curran to give kind of a summary on the DBE process at the next full board meeting, which will be on the 25th. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there any unscheduled business, Talby?
There is not, thank you.
Ira, can we have dates for the upcoming board and committee meetings?
As noted previously, the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Friday, June 25th at 8:30 a.m., and there are no meetings currently scheduled for the month of July.
Thank you so much. I need a motion to adjourn if there are no agenda items for executive session, there's no further business. May have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second in there?
I get it.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 You opposed? Thanks very much, all of you, have a nice weekend, thanks for sticking.
Thank you.